...underground individual of liberty justice.
Any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Bird, and second by Timmerman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Presentations, proclamations, acknowledgements. It is municipal clerk's week. Tom's favorite week, everyone's favorite week.
Everybody's favorite week.
Where's the proclamation, though? I have to read that.
I just so happen to have a copy here.
Hey, how about that? Okay. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of the government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be mindful of their neutrality, impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk throughout the participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now, therefore, I, Joe Julius, Mayor of Elko New Market, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, as municipal clerk's week, and further extend appreciation to our city clerk and our other certified municipal clerks, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So there you go, municipal clerk. All right. Anyone here for public comment? Once, twice, all right, public comment is closed. Consent agenda. Anyone have anything they want to discuss on consent, poll?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second. Second by Schwittemberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. No public hearings for tonight. General business.
Under general business, we have one item tonight, Mr. Mayor. The city council is being asked to adopt a revised development contract and special assessment for Christmas pines and amend resolution 1818, which was the original resolution approving the plat. The agreement that you have in front of you reflects some minor changes, as identified in the report, primarily change in ownership related to the project, some other small items which Renee can elaborate on, but the primary issue we have before the council tonight is related to section 26, which is related to the securities that were originally asked to be provided, related to the special assessments of the development fees. So this isn't the 429 project where the city is installing the sewer, street, and water elements or any of the infrastructure that's being provided for by the developer, but in past discussions with the developer and supported by the council, the city had offered to assess fees that would normally be paid at the time of plat, so this would be your sewer and water trunk fees, storm area charges, and Renee, park fees, are they included in that, park fees? The intent is that they would be assessed against the 20 lots within the development. As each lot sells, those assessments would be paid to the city out of that transaction as part of the assessments, and to be paid no later than three years down the road. When the idea of taking this approach and offering this tool to developers was discussed with the council, it was done with the understanding that we'd require a security covering 100% of those assessments, typically a letter of credit for the project, which wouldn't mean that it wouldn't work necessarily for every developer, because in order to secure a letter of credit, you have to be able to sufficiently collateralize it, usually at 100%, but if they have the ability to do that, then they can not have to pay those dollars upfront, and the amount they would pay on the fee for that letter of credit would typically be less than what they might be paying on the construction loan or the loans associated with the project, that was the intent. The developer in this case has asked us to weigh that security. With regards to this specific project, there is no mortgage on the project, they're basically paying cash for all the elements of the project, a large portion of the work for the infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera, providing value to the property has been done on it, and the argument is that the risk of default on the payment of those assessments is extremely low. Staff, even though that's the specific question on this, staff is asking the council to discuss on this item in a larger context of how we would approach it with the assessment of fees generally, and then based on that discussion, apply it to this specific project.
Okay. Renee, did you have anything you wanted to?
I don't want to have anything further.
Okay. Before we start discussing, Gary, you're the developer in this sense, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think Tom did a great job summarizing what we're trying to get done and how we got to where we are today. And I think the, I see both sides, I can see the position that the city can be in if they're extending, really kind of extending credit in the wrong place. As the city grows, the large developments, I don't know if this has a place in a...
If you will, don't mind, sorry, thanks. It's for the records, for the camera, we have to have your pretty face on camera, Gary.
Just my opinion would be, you know, in a large project, that it may not be a good idea for the city to get in playing finance. When you're looking at some of these specialized projects, the planned unit development projects, the infill projects, that don't really always fit in a nice square box, the city coming up with creative solutions, I think is a way you get a lot of things done in today's real estate environment, and that's how we got here. You know, Tom had some good ideas and we kept playing along, so my comment back to the city was, because this site is largely a three acre conversion, it's not an 80 acre farm with hundreds of lots and all kinds of things, we have a small parcel, when you break down the cost to develop the parcel per acre, it's staggering, right? So it doesn't really appraise well, it doesn't finance well, so we have opted just to come in as a cash developer, so the land is paid for cash, the improvements to this point's cash, the engineer's been paid cash, the ponding improvements that are now done have been paid cash, so we're 100% in great position. So the balance left to pay on the entire project for street construction and curbs and water sewer is approximately 280,000. So my comment to the city was, I'm fine posting the letter of credit for 125% of the total left to pay, and I felt that that was 125% of what the total risk the city could ever experience, even if I got ran over by the bus, right? So if I disappear, you guys have 125% security to finish the project. So I thought the city was in a really good position, that was my argument for taking kind of a special consideration. So I understand, how do you play favorites, what's good for one developer and not the next, so I made a comment to maybe Tom and Renee, is that do you set up a planned unit in your ordinance, maybe something that has a special identifier, that, so you don't have to look at every development, the city plays the same, right? So is there something that has, it's like, it's like when you come in for a planned unit development, you're allowed considerations if you bring community benefit. So on some of the infill pieces that fix some of the city problems, you know, we're going to come back in in a few months with hopefully some ideas on that seven acres, which is on Dakota, just to the north city limits, you know, and again, that's a piece that's just, it doesn't fit in a square box, right? So that's all, I just would say, I think from the city's standpoint, our total, you would be the only creditor on the project with 280,000, or I'm sorry, Renee, the fees, we're talking about 206. So if you take 20 lots divided by 206, that's about 11,000 per lot. So if the bus ran me over and backed up and ran me over again, you guys would hope to get the property back at 11,000 per lot, nothing out, right?
And we'll sue the hell out of the bus.
My point is, the, you know, the idea is to protect the city, and here the city is in absolutely first position, in an excellent position, so I don't think we're trying to do something that jeopardizes the integrity of what you guys on, how you operate, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for the developer?
Mayor, in response to Gary's comments, I'd like to address the council. I would, as Tom stated in his introduction, I would like to ask the council to consider this in a larger context. As Gary stated, not all developments are equal. We are currently in discussions with two other properties, where a 31 lot development and a 44 lot traditional development are being proposed, when, and possibly this same scenario is being considered, where the development fees, which are typically paid upfront in cash by a developer, you know, on this small development, 200,000, on a larger development, they could be a half a million to a million dollars that developers would typically pay upfront in cash. When you start getting into extenuating circumstance, you may put the city in the position of trying to be the underwriter on a project, and I really would prefer not to do that, I would suggest it maybe via a policy decision across the board.
What would be the costs for like the 31 and the 40 lot ones estimated, compared, you get the 206 for this one?
It's, they typically range between 10 and 12,000 dollars a lot.
So just do the math, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's pretty...
So 360 to 480, so yeah.
So say 10,000 or 12,000 on the high end, and maybe about 10, 500,000 per lot.
So when you say you want, you'd like us to consider this in a greater context, so beyond this project that's right in front of us?
Sure, so if you, and what I'm asking is that if you are going to direct staff not to require securities for Mr. Tewes' project, then that that perhaps be the case across the board, or not?
Seems the risk is going to vary by project, you know, in this one, you don't have to put in a lift station, or any of those, if those improvements are there. On other ones where you might have several hundred thousand dollars of infrastructure to put in, typically using those fees, now you're spending money and waiting, whether, you know, you don't know if it'll come in, so that I would think would be a consideration, there may not always be fund balance to carry those things.
So that's a good point, so if you have a project and it's pulling a major oversized water main, because it's not only serving that project, but the three properties behind it, we would pay or credit the developer for installing it, or we'd pay them to install that oversized pipe, the lift station, so projects themselves can have quite a bit, this one is a little bit, it's one of those projects that doesn't have any oversizing elements to it, there's no oversizing to the streets, there's no oversizing to the water main, there's no oversight of the sewer main, there's no lift station, so this one is different in that respect.
So, and to that point, that's, I struggle with looking at this particular project, and then having to apply whatever we do here to a greater service, because it's so unique of a scenario, so, that's why I just struggled a little bit with what you're asking.
I think the challenge we have is that every project is unique, so even if a project has those oversizing elements of the system improvements, the cost of those within any given project, and the cost of those relative to the number of lots in any given project can also vary quite widely. So there, no project is exactly the same, and so Renee and I have talked about this, you know, could you set a criteria, the problem is, is the criteria, the box never fits, and you always end up with...
Well, it's a fairness question too, because whether you're not in need of a lift station is subject to the vagaries, topography, it doesn't really do with the choice you can make. Everybody runs out and buys the properties that don't need it, thinking that they'll get, that wouldn't be a good criteria.
I'll make one more comment, then I'm going to just turn it over to council to start discussing, but if every project is unique, then why should we put together a blanket policy? But either way, I mean, it is kind of two separate things that we're being asked to discuss, right now we have a developer in front of us with a project that they've invested a lot of money in, and then on a separate issue, it's, okay, how do we tackle these things in a broader sense? I'm okay tackling both things, but I do think we do need to separate them in this case, so with that, what do you guys think?
So, city is willing to put up the amount of the needed improvements in the street and utilities? So what if you, because everything is unique, in some cases there is a lift station, in some cases there's other things that would be encumbered more by the city, couldn't we update our language and our policy to state that it has to, that that security has to at least cover the cost of those utilities?
We do already, our ordinance does state currently, so the 125% is spelled out in code, that they have to provide 125% security for the public utilities that are being installed within the project.
Or did you mean that if there's a situation where there is some extra oversizing facility that has to be built, their security for fees has to at least cover that?
Has to at least cover that, yeah.
It's either the fees from their development cover it, or the fees that, the balances in our infrastructure funds, so let's use a real life example, Boulder Heights is a development that's under construction, south of the golf course, 53 lots was the first phase, the developer had to come in and he had to pay developer area charges for the four infrastructure funds. A lift station was needed to service that development. If, and that's a system, and that was a system lift station, it wasn't a special lift station that he was trying to do premature development, that was the one that was identified on our sewer plan, the system infrastructure, so we would pay for that typically. If we had the funds in our sanitary sewer infrastructure fund, pay that, if it was a healthy fund and we had the fund to pay that, then the developer wouldn't necessarily be on the hook for that. If we didn't, in that case, we didn't have the funds, and, but, so we took the developer's sewer access fees to pay for the lift station, does that make sense?
Yeah, and I understand that, but I guess my point is, is that they're going, he's going to pay the full amount at some point, within a three year period or whatever that period is. Upfront, he's going to pay enough to cover the utilities. So if, in every case, the utilities are going to be totally different depending upon the subdivision, so if we update the amount that they have to pay at a minimum upfront to cover the utilities, so it doesn't have to come out of our funds, then we don't have a problem, right? So then, it's paid upfront, we don't have to take it out of our funds, we don't have to, and at the very least, that amount has to be paid upfront, the rest can be then paid within that three year period or whatever that timeframe is. That to me makes sense, because we're not encumbering anything out of our fund, we're getting their money to pay for the utilities, which we're going to get anyways in the future, eventually, no matter what, so why not just change the policy to meet that? So we don't have to come up with anything, but yet, they don't have to necessarily come up with a full amount upfront either.
So if there's system infrastructure costs that we have to participate in, that they have to pay at least enough to cover that?
You stumstaff, that doesn't happen often.
I understand what you're saying. And I'm trying to apply that to the two developers, that we are working with, one alone as Mayor Pete Self, we're going to have some system infrastructure costs in water, moving the water to the lock shower, so, you know, maybe not all of the water access charge will be assessed.
So I understand where you're going, John, but when we collect those fees from that development, it's not specific to pay off that, so when we collect those fees, we're also collecting them to pay all their system infrastructure we've already done, or have yet to do.
I think Rich's example that you're using as an example of how to collect, was just an example of how within a particular fund, how it can have a direct link, but those fees that we're collecting, so the fees that we're collecting from Gary's project, there's no system infrastructure there, but the fees that we're collecting are helping service the debt on the water treatment facility, they're helping service the debt on the lift station work, the onsite generation project that we're going to be doing, you know, this coming year. So those dollars that we collect are necessary to pay for that, it's just not as, the linkage isn't direct, there's a little more gap between the timing, or we're collecting it for something that's already been put in, put in place, so that would be a way to justify a certain amount to reduce the risk, but it's not actually covering the risk.
True, I mean, you're not going to cover the risk unless you take them type of fee, which, you know, I think everybody understands that, but if we don't at least recover a portion of it, then we're taking a huge risk. So if we're going to, and I'm not saying by any means that we should allow this to happen, because if we're going to allow it to happen here, it needs to be allowed, like Renee said, to every situation, because the next person that comes in is going to be like, well, you let him do it, so why can't you let me do?
And then that's where I, you know, I think there are the qualifiers and criteria that we could potentially get to, to figure out, and I think some of those qualifiers or qualifiers and criteria could and should be the quality of the developer, and those intangible things, and they're not always, they're not intangible, but they're measurable, and there's the reputation, the past history of their work, because, I mean, there's been projects recently where even if they had all the money, I would have been more scared something bad was going to happen than, you know, something like this, and I think that, I would hate to have something where, and I don't think it's going to be before I get across everything, I think we should allow for some of that case by case decision making thing, that we do take it all into consideration. I get, and when I was talking to Tom earlier though, I mean, I was on the same page thinking, okay, no, we should just set up criteria here somehow, make it if it's over this amount, boom, it's good, or not good, or whatever, but, I mean, I think there's some value in being able to have those, these types of discussions specific to, it's not like we're going to have 50 million developments, hey, if we did, sweet, but then the Met Council will say we don't have pride to talk, make it up there, but, I mean, I think we're not, I don't think it's going to be that, I don't know how big a profit is, but going to potentially be.
Well, I, I mean, you're, I think the discussion is correct, there isn't like an absolute, it's all permitted or not, it would be dependent upon our ability to fund it, I mean, the fund has to be healthy enough to be able to wait for an extended period of time, that's partially related to whether or not there's any system infrastructure required, et cetera, so I think there could be some, but I think what we're trying to get to is staff, is if there's going to be a setup, or there's going to be criteria, we'd like to establish criteria that are generally applicable across the board, so we have, we have a box that we can look in when we're working with developers, that we know this is acceptable, because we start having these discussions, even related to these items, very early on with discussion, with discussions with developers, is they're trying to do their high level performance to see if the project even works, and the numbers that we're talking about, I mean, that's where the margin is in the project, I mean, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but you kind of, you need to know early on in the process, the difference on whether or not we could assess the development fees early on, that's a number you need to know, whether or not you're making your margin on the project.
I think where you guys can go on this, quite frankly, is the city should be able to do a financial risk assessment on every project, and if that financial risk assessment passes a litmus test, then you could apply this special set of circumstances, right? If you have a developer that's coming in here that's got the project fully financed, fully mortgaged, no equity, there's a good chance that this thing could tip over to that market, you don't want to be in the middle of that deal, right? You maybe don't even want to promote that deal to start, because then we've got these half-built projects, right? The litmus test could be, it's an easy calculation, right? If there's a 50% or less loan to value, that you know that project is stable, and it's good, it's going to, you know, then the city, what do you have to lose? Because either the project doesn't go, and you don't get the city to grow with fees, or it grows safely, and then you're fine. It's putting in that measure of safety, and I think it's a financial calculation. You know, the Scott County, in the planning and zoning manual, they redid this years ago, they had a very subjective opening sentence in that book that said, if we determine your development is premature, we just simply tell you no. Well, what was premature? All kinds of things, right? They could say transportation, they could say fire and safety, they could say sheriff, all kinds of things, they had a clause that was premature, so you guys could easily run a kind of a subjective financial analysis of each project, and if there's a threshold of security that the city feels safe with, we can offer this as an incentive plan, as a financing mechanism in the city. If you don't hit this threshold, you don't qualify. That's where I would go with it.
So Andrea, other than a general sense of, we're not going to do this if we feel it puts our funds at risk, do we have a mechanism, or, I mean, there's legal and practical questions related to that, from a legal standpoint, can we, can we require or put projects through a financial analysis? You essentially have to provide us the performal for the project, answer all these financial questions, almost as if we were doing a business subsidy situation or not?
I think if you're, if they're asking for something from the city that deviates from what the standard policy is, you can say, if you want that, then you're going to need to provide us A, B, C, and D. So yeah, I think that you can require those items if they want to have that option available.
So Renee and Gary, speaking from the developer's standpoint, Renee speaking from a staff person's standpoint, how does that work in practice, that, I mean, Gary, if we were talking to you upfront, and I was saying, hey, we'd be able to do this, but you need to open up your books and show me the performal for the project, early on the project, is that an offset put you off, or is that something you'd be willing to do?
No, I think the developer has to do that anyway, right? You come to town before you're going to launch a project, you have to either get an appraisal or some kind of an estimate of value of the property, and there's going to be a cost number, then it's an easy calculation, right? What is that developer doing on an overall, what's the loan to value piece, that's what you're looking at? How deep is the developer in the project, how safe is that project?
The city doesn't normally get involved in that piece of it, though, that's a whole piece between you and your lender and such, your risk, that's the problem.
But it would work, Renee, almost like you have an engineer's estimate, right? So now you have a financial estimate, what is the risk of the project? And I think you get to do it only because you're offering a special finance package from the city's standpoint. We can offer this to certain projects if the city doesn't incur any more risk. Our risk threshold is this, if you meet this criteria, it's not even like qualifying for a government-backed loan, or a first-time homebuyer loan, you have to have a certain threshold of things to require for these special programs. We have a special program that helps our special projects, small projects, infill pieces grow in the city, but you have to be in the safe zone, and here's how we've established the safe zone, right? I don't think that's hard.
I understand, and it may not be hard, I just don't particularly, I don't think that we're currently staffed and equipped internally to do those analyses of county business.
Rich, you had your hand raised, really.
I was thinking about Woodcrest as an example, where you're solving some intractable problem using a tool like this, so it's a little bit of a mix of that, it's a mix of the idea of the financial subsidies, where you might bring in a Bruce Kimmel or someone like that to help sort that out, and it's also, it sounds a lot like a variance, you know, is there a practical difficulty there here? So it's a mix of those things.
For me, John's suggestion is easy in black and white, in a black and white, you know.
Well, you could, I mean, if you wanted to build in some sort of analysis of the development, you know, but just, and I'm all for all those different options, but I want to make sure that we're limiting our liability, so there's got to be at least a minimum amount, because otherwise, it becomes subjective, whatever council's sitting here could say, okay, this development doesn't have to pay anything, and that would be absolutely ridiculous on our part.
But props to them if they could convince at least 200 people to believe them.
But the point, the point is, is there needs to be some level of consistency, that you have to pay at least this amount, and this is why.
They'll all have to pay the amount, it's just a matter of if they pay it upfront, or they're assessed it over a maximum of three years.
So you end up with a cash flow issue at worst.
The fees aren't being waived.
I was just going to say, I mean, to your original points, I think I would need, want perhaps, for further diving into some of these details of this bigger, broader policy thing, so I'd rather look at this specific one right now, than provide direction to staff to say, all right, now come up with a criteria, and if the two others come in now, good for them, now they're in this window of opportunity to come back and ask for the same type of thing, until we get the policy created, or whatever recommendations there would be for the broader way to address this. I don't have any concerns with this particular issue, this particular one, and would be very confident in moving forward with the understanding that we're going to continue to work through this process to make sure that it's in place, and we have the foundation built for the next however many years worth of development.
Kate, Don?
That I was just going to say, if we could figure out a way to resolve the 2B right now, and then go to city staff and say, can you come up with what you would consider your criteria, if you had a box to work in, what would you do, and then bring it back to us to look at?
I think that we should look at this, each development at a time, because like Josh said, there's not going to be 50 million of them. I think that we can absolutely do this for 2B, I think that there's, I don't see risk at all, but... But, every project is gonna be different in some way, shape, or form.
I, I, I think.
And I think just to put a blanket, I think just to put a blanket, it's really not black and white the way I look at it. I think just to put a blanket, statement on criteria can backfire on us. Because somebody's gonna find a loophole and say, well, I fit into this criteria, and there's something that we missed, or I just, I'm comfortable with that.
So, there's two parts that, Don, you're actually correct. We can look at it on a case-by-case basis. There's no legal reason why, why we can't. So, part of it becomes kind of the practical issue. Oh, you did that for Gary, you should do that for me. So, there's a little bit of that that goes on. The other part, to be perfectly honest, is giving staff their direction. Because on that looking at it case-by-case, by the time you guys see it. It's a done deal, and I'll be blunt, it's not practical for us to come and negotiate it at the beginning of the process when you're working with the developer. They want clear answers upfront that this works and this doesn't. That puts a great deal of, that all that subjectivity then has shifted to a staff level. And I'll be honest, the council that's sitting here today may not be the council that's here in two years. Or, something else might have happened, and, and Josh has his opinion today, he might have a different opinion tomorrow. It makes it a little bit more difficult for staff to, I'm picking on you. It makes it a little bit more difficult for staff to navigate that. And we're okay if you're gonna delegate that to us, but then we also expect that the council's going to back us when we have to make those kinds of subjective decisions.
So, this is a unique project. It's, it's, it's a unique project. Gary, how long have you owned this property?
Seventeen, eighteen years.
Seventeen, eighteen years. And have you, how long have you been trying to develop this property?
Seventeen, eighteen years.
Is it fair to say this is the closest you've gotten to getting this done?
We're close, right?
So, this has been decades, well, almost two decades' worth of work in trying to do something with this property, which is twenty lots, okay? And I, I don't say that to minimize the prop, this project, but it's not like we're looking at eight different hundred-lot developments with all different characteristics. We're off the New Market, we're a town of forty-seven hundred people, and we're trying desperately to grow. I, I, I would not be super willing to do anything to make this any more difficult than it already has been. When it's taken seventeen, eighteen years to develop something, and it's right on the corner of two and ninety-one, I don't think you can dismiss that. I, I think we, I, I'm all for waiving those securities, and that's my personal opinion, we'll vote shortly, I know. To the larger context of, you know, do we create a, do we create a checklist? Do we create a box that, for staff to work with? I think that's fair game to discuss, I just don't know it's fair game to discuss with a project on the table. I, I, I think it's probably a good discussion to have at an EDA meeting, or even have a, I don't know, however staff wants to approach those sorts of things, maybe a retreat topic, I don't know. I think there's a lot of different ways that we can approach that. I just don't think it's fair to look at something that, we have a developer that's paid property taxes on this for seventeen, eighteen years, and is trying desperately to do something. And quite frankly, I, I just, I won't speak for the developer, but I don't think there's a ton of margins in this already. So, if we're requiring more to be put in a letter of credit or some other security beyond what we're already requiring, which is, what's the dollar amount we're talking about?
Two hundred and six?
Two, two hundred and six thousand, so a hundred and twenty-five percent. I think it's a, I think it's a little unreasonable on this, for this particular project. I don't disagree with anything anyone's had to say. I just think we need to treat this unique, cause it is a unique project. Does anyone else have any?
I do.
I thought you might.
But let's state the reasons why we're doing it.
Yeah.
And we're doing it because it's financially sound. We're doing it because he's willing to put up some of it, but not, can't necessarily do all of it from a financial perspective. And, and it's, and it's a part of the community that we wanna fill in, it's a, it's a gap. So, if those are the criteria for doing something special in this situation, let's then instruct staff to come up with, using those criteria as a basis, to come up with a way that we can consistently give them direction to be able to do, to do that, right?
I would recommend the other criteria that you might wanna throw in there is the fact that it's small development and a, a lower number of fees, some, you know, currently it's under three hundred thousand or under two hundred and fifty, so it isn't breaking the bank.
So, would it be reasonable to use what John just said as a base for a future discussion on how we set that criteria in general? Is that something you'd agree with?
Well, and, and no matter what, I mean, at any point, if I wanna go develop somewhere out here, all I gotta do is make a request that I wanna variance from whatever policy we have in place anyway, so.
That never happens.
I mean, we can make whatever thing we want, but we can request it all the way.
No, but this, but this gives staff, though, the ability to go talk to the next developer that wants to do it, without bringing it to us, come up with a, a solution, and then bring it to us.
Yeah, so I'd agree with, I agree with Josh. I know you guys will find this amazing, but it's not uncommon for us to come back and say, this was the, well, we're doing it right now. This is the direction, and now we're gonna do something great. But, but John's correct. If we have a box to work in, it allows us to be able to have the discussion with the developer upfront to get projects to this point where we're just doing problem-solving at the end.
I don't think we're, I don't think any of us are really saying different things. I think it's just a matter of how we put it together, so.
So, if, if the council wanted to, say, for example, approve Gary's project under the option that does not include the security, I think we've heard enough that we could put together some sample language related to criteria. There may be some additional discussion that's required related to that. I don't know, I'll be honest, I don't think if we had a, a work session specific to this, I think we'd have, just have the same conversation we just had. I think we're at the point where we will need to, if we're talking about the box now and not Gary's project, we would need to bring something for you guys to respond to. And I think we've got enough to be able to do that, or at least lay out some ideas on that, on, on the larger box. But what I've heard from the council is that the council is willing to go without securities on this specific project because of some unique aspects of it. The limited number of lots, which translates into a limited amount of financial liability associated with it, the nature of the financials, what we know about the financials of the project. And that there's no system infrastructure that's having to be paid for, associate, directly related to this specific project.
And I think also that location.
And that it's an infill project.
So, yeah, I, I like this discussion. I want Elko New Market to have the reputation, and we have to, to get that reputation, we have to earn it, of being developer-friendly, we're gonna work with developers, we're gonna empower our staff to have good, intelligent discussions to where they're not feeling undercut. I, I feel like we got there.
And yet not put our city at risk for being silly about making poor choices or whatever.
Thank you. So, unless there's further discussion, we could certainly have a motion.
I would like to.
Before we make the motion, this was the revised agenda, do we want to, wasn't it? And I approved the agenda as it was originally posted, but didn't we add this item under general business?
We did.
When we, when we placed, when we placed the revised agenda out, I guess we can make a correction for a minute. I guess it was assumed that you were approving the agenda we had placed.
There were no changes to your agenda, I just wanna make sure that.
Yep, I, the intent was to the revised agenda.
So, the wrong agenda was placed in front of us, was it?
Yes.
Okay. But the right agenda is what was, was posted.
What was posted and sent out to council, yes. Do we need a separate motion for that number?
Based on the five cri, is it? Based on the five criteria that was just listed, that we approve this for this property?
With the waiving of security.
Actually, what she needed to do was approve the resolution that approves the development contract and the assessments.
Is this resolution nineteen twenty?
Yep, and it would be the development contract option, cause there's two we provided to you that does not include.
How about this, can someone state? Can someone state it, we need to say so.
I would ask the council to adopt resolution nineteen dash twenty, approving the revised development contract, version number fourteen on the bottom, and special assessments for Christmas clients, and amending resolution eighteen dash eighteen.
John, you wanna be the motioner?
Sure. So, I'll make a motion based off what Renee just said.
Okay, motion by Jean-Paul.
Second.
Second by Timberman, any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. All right, on to reports.
I have no specific reports under administration unless there's any questions for staff from the council.
Had one, don't remember what I was gonna ask yet.
I do have one question for council. Out in our little awards case, we have the trophy from previous mayor Gabriel, winning the Mayor's Cup, which was the first annual and only time that they had a race at Speedway Park, where they had all the mayors in the county race each other in a race. Tony brought home the trophy, it's been in the trophy case. He's asking whether or not the city feels the need to keep that, or whether or not he can take it home.
Since it's Tony, we're keeping it. I'm just kidding.
I say it goes home with him.
Everybody's okay, yeah.
And then we just have to talk to Speedway about doing another one of those races.
Speedway doesn't exist anymore.
It doesn't.
Or Raceway Park.
You know, we have a Speedway here in town.
We do. So, talk to Tom.
You know, what you could do is have him come in to get it, take a photo of it, put it in a frame and put it in there.
Oh, there you go.
Good idea.
You're an idea guy, John.
Yeah, you are.
All right, did you? All right, nothing for public works, police? Nothing for fire, I would assume?
I, I, a question for the police, wasn't somebody coming out? Did you mention that somebody was coming out recently, or did they?
Yes, so inspectors came out to cut some holes in the floor to inspect the foundation, and went up in the roof to inspect the rafters and found nothing that would prohibit moving forward. Is that a good way to say it? The second early assessment, preliminary assessment is nothing found that would stop the process from moving forward. If there are correct items that will have some cost to them, they'll be included in the, in the budget for the remodel, but there's no non-stars.
Is there an expected start date?
No, but we could put maybe the beer can in the baseball in the trophy case that was out there in this place.
There we go.
I will make a motion.
So, from a, from a timing standpoint, the architect is, was supposed to have their current phase of work completed by the end of May. The goal that we're shooting for is to come to the council in June with basically concept, budget, and looking for direction on whether or not we move to the next step.
Excellent.
Engineering? Nothing, all right. Community development? You're good, unless you have something you wanna add. You're good, all right. Parks, there was the minutes in the packet. Anyone have any comments or anything? CCEC? Danny?
Meeting is in like two weeks, I think.
All right, scale. Yeah, last scale meeting was canceled, so, yeah, more to come.
Is the next one the one that we should be at?
Yes.
The next two.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Can you put those in your calendar?
They should be on your calendar right now, if they're not letting you know.
Want to have them?
MVTA.
MVTA is not until, oh, May twenty-second.
I thirty-five?
Sorry.
Anyone with I thirty-five?
Oh, that was good.
We're just, you gotta. All right, Chamber of Commerce, everyone had the email from Don White Solak in front of them. Unless anyone has anything they wanna discuss on that, we can let the email speak for itself. No Downtown Improvement Committee, discussion by council. I'm sorry?
We'll discuss the League Annual Meeting, a discussion we're having by email.
Just so we point out, that discussion was amongst the three of us, there is no legal violation. So, the issue is that, of course, the League Conference falls over the council meeting on the twenty-seventh. So, the options that are available for the council members that are planning to attend is they can go to the conference and just not be here for the meeting at night, which means that we won't have a full group. But, that John for sure is going, Joe, Joe's not going, so we have one council member, so we'll have four councilable members that night. I'm still on the fence on whether or not I'm gonna try and go to the conference right now, towards not. The other option, so they, we could just run short, we can reschedule the meeting to another time, or you can say, John, you're gonna have to get in the car Tuesday, Thursday afternoon, drive your boat back down here.
We can remote him in, can't we? We can now, cause it's a public spot, as long as he does this in a hotel out there where anybody's accessible to.
We have to have a policy in place to be able to provide for you.
So, I don't think it's an issue. As long as it's just me, then I would say that, you know, if, if, well, first and foremost, I would try to make it back for the meeting, period. And then secondly, if, if I have to miss a meeting, then I have to miss the meeting, but.
And if I do go to the conference, I will be back for the, it would be the first time I drove back from a conference, sometimes driving back to the conference that night, so I'm always here, so.
One thing that I will say is that, uh, May twenty-third, um, my wife's having surgery, so I'm gonna.
Could possibly not make that.
So, quick, quick update, council will recall that we were looking to have the roundabout stuff on the May ninth meeting. Just the way it's looking from a timing standpoint, it's probably gonna be the twenty-third. We don't have the cooperative agreement draft yet from the county. We're at the end of the week, the week before Packet Week. If there's any back and forth on it, just the normal timing, we're probably not gonna make Packet for, we're probably not gonna make Packet for the night on it. So, we're pretty close to making the call that it's just gonna go to the twenty-third. Is, I, I know in the past, there was a question that had been raised about wanting to have the entire council here, is that an issue, John?
So, what, I would like to have the whole council, I certainly would, would do the exact same thing if my wife was having surgery. Is there any openness to moving the meeting to the twenty-second, which is the Wednesday? Or any, not openness is already.
Would that be okay for you if we moved it to the twenty-second, the day before?
Yeah, that'd be fine. And then you were talking also about having a special meeting before that, potentially.
Correct.
So, if we did that on the twenty-second, it would be a long night, we'd be both together.
And I'd rather have a long night than an extra night by all, I mean, that'd be my work.
So, that, that was another item.
The twenty-third would have, I would have rather just started at four o'clock or four-thirty.
That was the next item in the council discussions.
So, if we're gonna do the twenty-second, I'd rather have it be a long day there than a separate, I can't do it on the sixteenth, regardless.
Kiara, Kiara and I are both tied up with other things too, so. Okay. So, first thing first, are, is everyone okay if we reschedule the twenty-third meeting to the twenty-second?
Yes.
It's gonna be weird.
I'll make a motion. I'll motion to move the meeting from on May twenty-third to Wednesday, May twenty-second. Motion by me, second by Timberman, all in favor? Aye. And the next thing is the retreat, so you, it started talking, I, in my happy little world, I wanted to have something outside of a regular council meeting. But I'm one person, so if it's, if it's the desire for the, of the rest of the council to just add it on a additional city council meeting, we, we can certainly do that. But I'll leave it up to the rest of the council, since I stated my.
I was in favor of having it on a separate night as well, but I will do whatever, I, I'll do whatever the council wants to do. I was in favor of having it on a separate night as well, but I will do whatever, I'll do whatever the council wants to do.
I can't make the 16th. That's the only problem. So that date doesn't go together.
Don, John, Josh?
If we want to do another, a separate one, a different date, then I just don't know where that challenging scheduling with the summer stuff that was alluded to.
As I was starting to get schedules in from people, it quickly became apparent that we're in summer. So people's schedules are just really busy. And I had this discussion with the acting mayor and the mayor that it's been my experience over the last several years that getting, as much as we have good intentions, the reality of getting a full council on a non-council night has always been extremely challenging. That's why I suggested that maybe, I know that meeting in May, we don't have anything currently scheduled for that work session. If everybody was available earlier in the evening, we could meet at four, four thirty. We provide some sort of food and beverage as part of the work session. That would add to the informality of it and maybe help with the discussion. And we just roll straight into the council meeting that night. If we can't meet as early as four, four thirty, we could also meet a little later, like five or five thirty, and just start the business meeting a little later, but that would be a later night.
Excuse me.
So we are kind of at the end of May. I mean, it's not quite panning out the way I had initially envisioned this in, over the winter. And I don't think we need, we should be drifting too far into June, so, you know, unless I think, unless we can kind of look at our calendars now and figure out another date, then maybe let's just plan on the 22nd. What does everyone think?
It's an up notice for me, so I don't, you guys, it doesn't matter.
Whatever you just said.
John, Josh?
Got my calendar open, so...
You guys want to just go with the 22nd, or should we try and look and see if there's other days that might work for people?
Can everyone be here at like four o'clock on the 22nd?
Can you guys give me a minute and see? So part of the idea is that as we're talking through, we have staff people. I have to look and see their availability based on what they provided earlier, whether or not that's a major...
Okay. Do you want to just check and get back to us then?
I'll have to.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Anyone want a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Timmerman?
Second.
Second by C. Prasad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is closed. Thank you, everybody.